It's seven o'clock and we're gonna start. Dan and Troy, we're gonna start. Okay. Good evening. Tonight is Monday, May 8th, no, May, November 8th. Sorry, I really want warm weather. It is not May 8th, it's November 8th, and we do have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. The first order of business is agenda approval. At tonight's meeting, we're going to be removing two items from the agenda and adding two items from the agenda. So I just want to make it clear to everyone what is going on. From the discussion portion, we're removing the discussion on profile of a graduate. And from the action portion, we're removing the magnet programming recommendations. So those are the two things that we are removing. And then these items are going to be discussed at an additional work session the first week of December and come back to our board at our December board meeting. Then from an adding to the agenda perspective, we are adding the mandated staff vaccination and testing as an action item. And then we have a resignation agreement and release of claims being added to consent. So I apologize for all the changes, but we do have those two adds and those two things that we are removing from our agenda tonight. So with that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting as stated?
So moved.
So, Anne? Okay. We will now vote by roll call. Is Ellen online? Oh, great, okay. We will now vote by roll call to approve tonight's agenda. Anne? That's okay.
Albert.
Aye.
Fox.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Jones.
Ellen. Oh, you don't have to, I don't think she can hear you until you turn your mic on.
Ellen, Jones.
Aye.
Michelson.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Wallen Friedman.
Aye.
Thank you. Great, tonight's agenda is approved. We're now going to move on to tonight's excellence in action. And tonight, we wanted to introduce the beginning of our rotating art installation here in the boardroom, which you can probably see around us. Going forward, these art displays are going to feature creative works of Edina students around the district under the guidance of our talented art teachers. The first display features the work of Normandale and Countryside Elementary School students. Normandale art specialist Leanne French Amara's fourth grade students started the year making watercolor paper collages in bird images inspired by Australian artist Pete Cromer, while third graders reviewed techniques by creating paintings of their own paint sets. She says they had a blast splattering paint on their artwork to make it more realistic. And then at Countryside, art specialist Jen Courtney has displayed the works of third grade firefly collages, second grade shoe designs, first grade positive words posters, and fifth grade squash doodle books. The large collaborative dot painting in the back is from Alyssa Barnes's kindergarten class. This art display will remain in place through the end of this month, at which time a new installation of student art from other schools will take place. So thank you very much to our talented students from Normandale and Countryside and art specialists Leanne and Jen for turning the boardroom walls into a gallery of creativity and inspiration. We are now going to recess our meeting to have our world's best workforce public hearing. So at this time, the meeting is recessed, and I am going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Smazel and Director of Teaching and Learning Jody DeSteen-Huber to do our world's best workforce public hearing. When that's over, our meeting will resume again with our hearings from members of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I know, okay. There we go. Okay. Thank you for your patience. Okay, good evening, Chair Ellenberg, Dr. Stanley, school board members, colleagues, and community members. Our public hearing this evening is a world best workforce and achievement and integration report. The goals of the hearing are to provide an update on the progress of each plan, as well as highlight next steps for our Edina students in alignment with our district strategic plan. Here with me this evening is Assistant Superintendent Dr. Smazel, and in addition, we have several members of our leadership team and teaching and learning team available to answer questions and provide input as we proceed. The World Best Workforce Bill was passed in 2013, and it is to ensure all districts are making strides to improve student performance. We have long-term comprehensive plan that structures intentionally align with the additional district plans that are also aimed at supporting student achievement and preparing students to be college, career, and civic ready. Some of these plans that are in alignment are noted here on the slide. Achievement and Integration: World's Best Workforce have been noted, as well as the State American Indian Education Plan and our Read Well by Third Grade Plan are two other examples of alignment throughout the system. Our World's Best Workforce Plan and our Achievement and Integration Plan have different components, and the five key goal areas for the World's Best Workforce Plan are listed here in the circle. We have early readiness, read by third grade, read well by third grade, closed achievement gaps, career and college ready, and all students graduate. And these are the five key readiness areas or the five key goal areas that are stated by the state for all people doing the world best workforce or all districts engaged in the world's best workforce. And then the three areas of Achievement and Integration Plan are access to excellent teachers, talent development, and staff development and alt-comp. We all have a role in ensuring that our students are college, career, and civic ready. This slide shows us who is responsible for what components of the world's best workforce and how we collaborate as a team in order to achieve our goals of college, career, and civic ready. We have the Minnesota Department of Education. They are here to offer support and implementing the plan and making sure we are complying with the statute and the intended goals of the plan. Our school district's role is to create the plan to align with the other curriculum and instruction areas and other plans that we talked about. We have the school board's role to adopt the long-term comprehensive strategic plan, which we have in place and have a lot of great implementation going on with that, and the school board's role to hold the public hearing like we're doing tonight. We're excited to soon begin engaging with the World's Best Workforce Advisory Committee, and their role is to partner with the school district and give guidance around the goals that are set and help to communicate and support the plan with all stakeholders. And most important, our community's role partnering with the district, providing that input and support on community strategies. We have here a summary of the goals. So the goal areas are the same goal areas that you saw in the circle that was on the previous slides. And then we have on the other side the summary of the goals that are specific to Edina that were set in order to help us move forward in the goal areas. We are going to be looking at each of these goals broken down in the next series of slides. So I'm gonna move through this and highlight goal area, all students are ready for school. Edina's three areas of focus last year in this goal area were to screen all incoming kindergarteners, increase the percent of teachers trained on the pyramid model, which is a model that supports understanding where our students are at and then responding to where they're at, and then baseline data on four-year-olds reaching the developmental milestones. And you'll see alongside of the summary of those goals where we are at in the results from last school year and if the goal is specifically met. One thing that's important for us as we gather data is to look at the data and collaborate around the data and how we can improve our results for our students. So this slide highlights some analysis of the data and some next steps. You'll see in all of our analysis, there are comments and information about the impact of the pandemic last year on our data and what we were able to either gather or even look at in a reliable and valid way. And so that is a key theme that you'll see throughout the analysis and next steps. The bottom point is an exciting point for us as our Edina early learning team is committed to the comprehensive literacy plan and have really engaged quickly and comprehensively with some strategies to move forward with their section, the comprehensive literacy plan, and the importance of that work. Okay, our next goal area is all third graders can read at grade level. And so our summary of our specific Edina plans with that are that we increase proficiency on our MCA and that we have growth within our MAP reading results. You'll see some asterisks there that we are noting that we are comparing the 2019 to 2021 MCAs, as we did not take MCAs in 2020 due to the pandemic and not being in school at that time in person. You'll also note that we highlighted that there were substantially fewer students who took both the MAP test where we could compare growth rates as well as just the MCA. And that is highlighted in the analysis and next steps as well. The first four bullet points with the analysis and next steps do highlight some components of pandemic that we think are important to point out and keep in mind. I just mentioned that we had fewer students taking both the MCA and MAP test, and there are data patterns that indicate many students who did not take the MCA or MAP are higher performing students. Also, the state change in proficiency was negative 6.8% and Edina's was negative 5.4%. So in comparison to the state, our students are, we can always continue to grow, but it's important also to look at how others are doing around us and see what that means for our students. And our next, next step there is also highlighted is the importance of our comprehensive literacy plan, and we continue to give updates to the community and the board on that throughout this school year. Okay, the next goal area is all racial and economic achievement gaps are closed. I do wanna note, I do want to note that there is a little bit of discrepancy of the slide here from what was in the report, and we'll fix that. We, I'm gonna point out that the summary of 2020-21 goal in the farthest left column where it says reduce the difference in performance on MCA reading between free and reduced lunch and non-free and reduced lunch student groups by 5.0%. On the slide that was in the board packet, it also had from two data points, and we just saw a discrepancy in those data points and wanted to make sure that we were accurate in reporting that. And the most important thing there for us to look at is that five-point gap and the three-point, sorry, my eyes, that's 39.1, 1.7% and the 46.56% of the gap from 2019 to 21, which then did reflect us meeting that goal because the decrease in the gap was 7.39%. One thing on the next slide with analysis and next steps that we wanna note as an important next step going forward is that we're committed to analyzing racial gaps and creating specific action steps in response moving forward, making sure we have accurate and reliable data and that we did, some of this was articulated in our board workshop prior to the meeting when we are talking about what our Edina data metrics plan will be, and that tells us what we will be measuring, why, and how. So that's an important next step in this slide. Okay, goal, our next goal area, all students are ready for college, ready for career and college. And this shows our ACT scores, increased percentage of students meeting all four ACT benchmarks, and then also increased percentage by STEM benchmarks. And you'll see when we move to the analysis slide and next steps that despite the challenges that we've had, our students have specifically had over the last couple of years, that our ACT scores have remained strong, and we should be proud of those strong results. It's exciting to see that there's strength in the current STEAM and STEM course offerings that we have and programs that like Project Lead the Way, and that's making an impact on our students. And our next steps, as we are all aware, is we're committed to having STEAM and magnet focus as we go forward in implementing the strategic plan. Okay, and the school area is all students graduate from high school. And looking at the graduation, this slide in the school area, in Edina, our goals for last year were to specifically be breaking this down by certain subgroups of students to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our learners in the four-year grad rates. And you'll see the data points listed here for that and all of the different subgroups. The same analysis, oops, excuse me, there's several similar analysis themes that you'll see. We had students definitely impacted by our pandemic, and it is important that we recognize the strength in our multilingual population that continues to grow in Edina and the assets that that brings to our community. And we also, with this, with these opportunities comes opportunity, with these opportunities with our students changing comes opportunity for us to look at how we're strengthening our systems for collecting and using data. And in our, in our strategic plan, we know that we're committed to increasing the number of all students engaging in career and college-ready experiences. So to summarize some of the highlights of the next steps moving forward, they're all aligned here to our strategic plan. One important area is that we're working to organize and have our first meeting to set our goals for next year so that that is submitted to the state mid-December and that we are making sure that we're focused on that for moving forward. We have an email out to former members and are working on making sure we have a comprehensive group there in moving forward. We're also working to develop the Edina metrics plan, and we have a high focus on accelerating growth for students in both math and literacy. And clearly, we have the comprehensive literacy plan connected to reading and literacy specifically. And I wanna highlight that that commitment is there for math, that we are accelerating the growth and recognizing where there are gaps and needs in our learners. And we wanna be really focused on those, that student gap data that we're seeing and recognizing where there are areas that we can grow for targeted groups of students who might, we might not be meeting their needs as well as we can be. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Smazel to highlight the Achievement and Integration Plan.
Thank you, Jody. Thank you, School Board Superintendent Stanley. Good evening, everyone. The Achievement and Integration Plan is a three-year plan, so it was developed by Mary Mandelfeld and team for nineteen, or 2020 through 2023. And so we're still in the midst of that plan, but as that plan comes to expiration, we'll be developing a new Achievement and Integration Plan. It sits under the World's Best Workforce umbrella. The purpose of A&amp;I is really to support racial integration. It's to create equitable educational opportunities and to reduce academic disparities among students of various races, ethnicities, and socioeconomic status. The school district gets about 1.2 million worth of funding for A&amp;I funds, and most of those are used at the district level, but we're actually able to access about $100,000 additional dollars, which is in the 1.2, if we agree to partner with another district, and our partner is Hopkins. So part of what I will talk a little bit about tonight is that partnership with Hopkins and some of the activities that we're doing with them with that $100,000, and then some of the activities that we're doing across the district with the rest of the money. So what does that money pay for? That money does support having three different cultural liaisons in our school district, and our cultural liaisons are supporting our Somali families, our Spanish-speaking families, and our Southeast Asian families in particular. We also have equity and inclusion specialists who work on these strategies across the district. We also use those funds to support math and reading intervention at various levels. And many of you are familiar with AVID as a program, as a structural program to help elevate student skills. And of course, we have AVID at the high school. We now have AVID at both middle schools, and we're piloting AVID at an elementary school at Countryside this year. It also supports College Possible, which is helping to support our underserved students to make college a more viable option and prepare them for that. And then it supports professional development, and it supports transportation, all in line with those three big goals that we shared a little bit earlier. The summer gives us an opportunity to do some of this partnering programming with Hopkins, and so we have Ready Set Kindergarten to help students be prepared for kindergarten. So we have students from Edina and students from Hopkins that come together and participate in this early learning experience. And then we also have something we called Summer AVID Bridge, and it's for seventh and eighth graders to help support them in some of the transitional elements of school. So a few goals around A&amp;I. The first one is about closing gaps specifically to reading. We did not meet that goal. I will say that in 2021, we had, if I go, if I, I'm gonna jump down to this Ready Set Kindergarten for a second and talk a little bit about that, because that's one of our strategies, because we're talking about getting students proficient in reading by grade three. So in the Ready Set Kindergarten, we had about 120 students participate in that, three hours a day, five days a week for three weeks. So they get about 45 hours of instructional time prior to going into kindergarten, so it's one of the strategies to try and elevate skills. And one of the things that the teachers do as part of that is they develop summaries of all of the students in terms of where they're at from a skill level. So as they, as we look at the data of our exiting students from that program, 85% of them scored a four out of five on school skills, which is an assessment that they put together. 89% scored a four out of five on SEL skills. 93% mastered name writing, which is a challenge when you're younger and maybe when you're older as well. 94% mastered counting. So those are just some of the things that they were looking at for students who are participating in that Ready Set Kindergarten. Another goal is to reduce our gaps that are seen as we look at some of our standardized assessments. And we did reduce slightly, but not enough for our goal that we have set for 2023, which is to reduce it by half. So we have some indicators that describe things that we plan to monitor as we move throughout this year. And one of the other strategies that I'll highlight are the students that participated in the AVID Summer Bridge Program in seventh and eighth grade. 54 students participated in that. 80% of the students said that this really helped me with my relationships with teachers and other students. 76% of them said they were excited to come back for another year, and 81% of them said this experience helped me do better in school. So looking at some of the data from our seventh and eighth graders. And then the last one is around retention of our students in our Minneapolis Transportation Program, and I will make the correction to the board packet. We did actually meet this goal at 90.95%, so I'll make that change. At the, one of the pieces I wanna highlight about AVID at the high school level is that we had over 100 students participate in AVID this, that are participating this year. That's the most we've had in five years. Typically, it's around 70 or 75. From 2016 to 2020, 100% of AVID students graduated from high school. So in terms of the success of this program in building up skills and strategies in students and helping them be successful in navigating high school, it's very successful. 75 to 100% were accepted to a four-year school. 86 to 100%, these are across these four years, took the ACT, and 71 to 100% of each of those four years took one advanced placement course. So part of what we're trying to do is make sure students have an experience in that high-level rigorous course, that they have an opportunity to hit some of these benchmarks that prepare them for getting into a college, et cetera. And in terms of increasing parent engagement with students, we have our cultural liaisons who have been holding family meetings periodically throughout the year. So we try to hold one in the fall, hold one in the winter time, and then one again in the spring. So I'm just trying to highlight a few of the strategies that are listed there. For the last one, I'll say that we did not collect survey data on this particular question. We, we will be rewriting this particular part of the A&amp;I plan to align better to our future training that we'll be describing in the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Plan, which will be presented to the board in December. So we don't have data on that last particular goal. That, I'll turn it back to Jody.
Another component of the Achievement and Integration Plan, as we talked about in the beginning, is that we have equitable access to excellent teachers. And so I will move us to this slide and just highlight our data points for that for the 2020-21 school year, where there's a graph that shows the diversity of our staff and the diversity of our students. And then we have our improvement strategies and what we see currently with our teachers. We do have a lot of celebration in the professional excellence of our teachers, and like to highlight that is having 24 national board-certified teachers, and that there are fewer than 530 in the entire state, and 24 are here in Edina, and also 36 licensed non-classroom staff with national accreditations. And that leaves us for questions from the public.
We can ask questions?
Yep, it's for the public to ask questions.
When you were compiling your data, did you also look into socio-demographic things like single-parent household versus two-parent household, stay-home parent versus two-parent parents, income levels, whether or not they live inside the city of Edina or they're fostered or traveling? Those type of factors considered, other than race, I'm pretty much sure.
Jody, do you mind repeating the question in the microphone for people at home? Yes, I can do that. When looking at the data, did we look at other data points such as single-parent household, looking at various factors that break down income a little bit more specifically, looking about residents that are in the district or outside of the district? Am I missing others to repeat?
Yeah, two, two working parents or not?
Two, two parents in the household, so. Others? Okay. Summarizes the gist of it. Okay, I will respond to, and it feels funny to respond here into the mic and not speak to you, I apologize. We did not break down all those data points in this data that we're presenting tonight. Did she have anything?
Yes, I'm wondering about the report of efforts to identify students with traits of dyslexia. That was something that had been done to the state in July, and I would have assumed that it would go into the world's best workforce. You know, we should have 17.5 to 20% of our students identifying with traits of dyslexia. What is the school district doing to address their conics and phonological awareness and word recognition issues?
Okay, I'm gonna repeat the question, and if there's pieces I need to re-rep, please let me know. The question is specific to dyslexia and what the district is doing in order to make sure that we are reporting those characteristics accurately. In June, you referred to that, there is a report, which is the Read Well by Third Grade Report, that needs to be reported to the state, and that really you're noting 20% of students would typically maybe have traits of dyslexia, and you're asking about what the district is doing in order to address that. Is that correct? Is there anything else I should? Okay. I definitely am gonna respond that that, in the World's Best Workforce Report, that's where there is alignment with Read Well, which is the goal area of Read Well by Third Grade. The goals that Edina chose last year for that area is to increase the proficiency of MCA by three points and that we had growth within the MAP. And so I. proficiency of MCA by three points, and that we had growth within the map. And so I will, in the goals of the World Best Workforce, there were not targeted areas for identification of students with dyslexia characteristics. However, that would be a great thing for us to address as we look forward into next year's plan. I would say, because we are working very hard to provide alignment, that in your question of what is the district doing to address that, there are many components of that within the Comprehensive Literacy Plan. And we can continue to communicate and share that with the community. One of the goal areas with the Comprehensive Literacy Plan that we have dove right into is building strength in the foundational literacy skills of our students. And so there's training that's happening with that. We have a pocket of teachers that are getting training in what's called letters training, which is focused on helping teachers learn how students read. That's a huge part right now of the Comprehensive Literacy Plan and seeing how our students, our teachers as students are learning in that training and applying it to their students. We've also had a big priority goal area in the Comprehensive Literacy Plan to focus on data literacy. And we had a great fall in looking at assessment data, specifically Fast Bridge and different components of Fast Bridge at different grade levels, and helping teachers make instructional matches quickly for things that they saw needed to be responded to. Our elementaries are also in the process of doing a dyslexia training. Many have, many of the buildings have completed it, and others are supposed to complete it before we go into the new year. And so they're doing that with the literacy coaches, and then literacy coaches are helping with the learning around that. So those are a couple highlights from the Comprehensive Literacy Plan that is focused on how we're supporting our teachers in recognizing the characteristics of dyslexia, and then how we're helping them respond to that. And I'll just note again that it will be a good area for us to look at how that might work in this year's World Best Workforce Goals.
Any other questions from the public? Well, thank you both for presenting the information. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to resume our meeting again. We're going to move on to hearing from members of the public. Pursuant to Board Policy 206, we ask that you do not duplicate information that has been previously presented. If you have a complaint about an individual employee, board member, or students in the district, please direct any of these comments to the appropriate site administrator, the superintendent, or submit them in writing to the board. The board typically does not respond to or have discussion on any issues presented, but questions raised during presentations will receive follow-up as directed by the board. I would like to remind all speakers that your presentations are limited to three minutes. We now have a display, it's going to show up on one of these TVs, I'm not sure which one, that will let you know when your three minutes are up. So please finish up at three minutes, and thank you. We have two speakers tonight. First is Patricia Martinez. So welcome, Patricia.
Okay, my name's Patricia Martinez. I work in Edina School District. I'm the union steward for the custodians. Okay, I'm here on behalf of the custodians and other people because I have a petition, but I forgot to bring it. I can give it to you tomorrow, because we're not happy that we have to be tested every week, the people that are not vaccinated. And, okay. We have some people that are minorities that don't speak very good English, so they're not even being explained. Everything's on the computer. I'm 60 years old. I can't even use the computer to see half this stuff. So we're not being, we don't get the proper information on what we need to do. And as far as, I can prove that it's ridiculous that you even want us to be tested or even have a, sorry. Because I can prove, I can prove that we have no protocol this year. I have asked Human Resources, I asked your head nurse, and nobody will tell me what the protocol is for cleaning for the COVID this year. Because we've been here from day one, people that weren't vaccinated, we were exposed to people. I can't do my job, neither can anybody else. We're, we go in school every day. Some of kids eat outside because the parents think it's more healthy for them. Well, when they come inside, classrooms are contaminated because we're not being told by anybody, the nurse, no one will tell us when somebody is sick. So how are we supposed to do our job and protect the kids and the staff and sanitize stuff the way it should be? If it's so dangerous, why aren't we being told to do our job properly? So we're being exposed, staff's being exposed, children are being exposed to the COVID because nobody will tell us. And to us, that's ridiculous. We have, I know you, you've got like $5 million for COVID last year, and we know you bought filters. We're told to turn those filters off because the filters cost, not the filters, they're air purifiers. The filters cost too much money, so they're telling us to shut them off. That's ridiculous. Why do we have them? And then this is what we were supplied, cheap gloves, one box of cheap paper masks. That's what the custodians got in the beginning. Were you seeing all these people on TV with suits on, respirators, all this stuff? And we were told, by management, you know how to use the chemical, don't you? Yes. Okay, then you know how to clean. That chemical says you're supposed to leave it on for 10 minutes to do its job. So we did that. And then as months went by, then we were told to only leave it on for three minutes. It's not doing its job. Now we're told not to do anything.
Ms. Martinez, can you wrap up?
So we're not going to get vaccinated.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
You're welcome. And I'm going to be back because I have more complaints.
Next we have Sean Johnson. Welcome, Mr. Johnson.
Tough one to follow. In light of recent FDA approval, in light of the recent FDA approval of the COVID-19 vaccine for children ages 5 to 11, I am here to remind the district and board of its current policies relating to teachers discussing and recommending vaccinations to students. A student's private health information is protected by the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act. Students also have a reasonable expectation of privacy according to Edina's school policy 514. Hypothetical examples of what I am referring to are if a teacher were to ask a classroom full of students to raise their hands if they are vaccinated, if a teacher were to ask students if they're planning on getting the vaccine, or again, hypothetically speaking, if a teacher were to tell his or her class that they felt all students should get vaccinated or be forced to wear a mask if they don't. As a parent, I feel these examples would be a violation of district and state policies. Not only do they cross the line when it comes to medical privacy between a teacher, student, and their fellow classmates, but these types of actions taken by a teacher also intimidate and alienate students. Students, especially elementary kids, do not have the capacity to make medical decisions on their own. Students' medical decisions are private matters made by parents or guardians, not by teachers. There is no district or state COVID vaccine mandate for children in Minnesota. Many parents will choose to get their children vaccinated, and many will not. As long as there is no vaccine mandate, this is a private matter between parents and their children. I am asking this board and school administrators to enforce the rules and policies of the district and state when these types of matters related to COVID arise. I'm also asking district principals and the superintendent to remind teachers that they do not have the right to discuss private medical matters of individual students in front of their class, nor do they have the right to make medical recommendations to their students. One of Edina's schools' strategic plans is to ensure an inclusive school culture. Please keep that in mind when you're voting on future policies that divide or alienate students based on their vaccination status. And finally, to fellow Edina parents, ask your children if this is going on in classrooms. If they tell you it is, don't just ignore it and do nothing. File a written complaint to the teacher, principal, and superintendent. It takes actions by you to truly make a difference and hold our schools accountable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay. We're going to move on to our consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
We will now vote by roll call to approve the consent agenda. Allenberg?
Aye.
Fox?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Michelson?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Wallen Friedman?
Aye.
The consent agenda has been approved. We're going to move on to our discussion items. And I believe that we only have one tonight, and that is a masking update for athletics. And we have Dr. Smazel and Troy Stein, our Assistant Principal and Activities Director. Welcome.
Good evening again. This is a item designed to update our masking practices, and really it is about active versus non-active participation, and getting more clear about the guidance that we're providing our coaches so that they can be more clear and consistent with how they provide that guidance to their players. So this is about the return to school plan guidance. Specifically, that's found, this update would be page 14 of that return to school plan guidance. And I'll ask Troy here to just kind of talk us through the proposed changes and then the rationale for those changes.
All right. Good evening, Chair Allenberg and Superintendent Dr. Stanley and the board and community. Thank you, Randy. You introduced it very well. A couple key points, really there's two points with the change that we're recommending. And one is related to, as we transition into our winter programming, we have officials that will be more active. Similar to our athletes, they will be moving up and down the court or up and down the ice. And one of the aspects that we experienced this fall was, we certainly had officials that were curious on our policy around masking. There were some officials that were selective in an era right now, unfortunately, where we have a shortage of officials. They are also asking about what our policy is around that. So that is a challenge. But we felt it was good to be in alignment with what we're asking of our athletes as they are actively participating. So that's number one. The other one is clarifying the expectation around masking when you're competing and/or when you were competing and you just come off and you have a seat on the bench, and maybe you have a seat on the bench for maybe a minute or two, and then you're back out on the court. It was challenging for our coaches to manage the game and the aspects of the game, but also to, it just wasn't realistic to have our athletes come off, being active, and then to put a mask on and then go back out on the court. It was cumbersome, and it was difficult to manage that. And so to stay true to the spirit of actively participating, we wanted to include the bench as well as actively participating. So you can see that we would strike that out with the return to the learning plan. So those are the two big changes that we are requesting, and open it up for any comments or questions.
Do board members have comments or questions?
I'll make a comment. I don't have any questions. I think that this makes sense. I think that any more clarification that we can give to our officials and the refs and for our coaches to support, I think is a good thing. So I read it, and I have zero questions. I thought it was a good change. So I'm in support of this.
Anyone else?
Well, I'm very glad that the athletes don't have to wear masks when they're exerting themselves. It would be very, very cumbersome, and I could see why, in the spirit of realism, we're striking, you're requesting that we strike that language. So, and we're not having a lot of outbreaks with the kids. And so, you know, they're exerting themselves, there's some aerosols coming out, so that's very good news. So glad the kids are out there, very glad.
Is there a sense of urgency to getting this approved? Because action wouldn't be able to take place for another month. Are there games or refs that you feel this change needs to take place before that?
So our first, our first winter competition is November 27th.
Okay.
So that would be, that would be the ideal timeline.
So if no board members have objections, I might suggest that we add it to our work session, even though I don't like voting for things at work sessions, so that, to meet that timeline.
I think that makes sense.
That'd be appreciated. Thank you.
I don't have anything else, if anyone, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to our action items. And per our change to our agenda earlier, we do have an additional action item. Do I have a motion to hold the mandated staff vaccination and testing resolution in abeyance until further review?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay.
Do you need to define abeyance?
Yes, so I was going to turn it over to Dr. Stanley, who's going to give a little background as to this action item and why it's on the board meeting tonight, and what abeyance means.
Thank you very much for that. So during the work session, we had a conversation related to the vaccination and testing. And the, OSHA has come out with suggestions related to vaccinations and testing as well. And their, their regulations will go into effect in January. And so I am proposing that we align ourselves with their regulations so that we can determine the financial impact on the district. And abeyance would mean that we would delay or hold off until we have further information related to that. Is that accurate?
We're going to suspend the resolution. That's what we're doing.
Okay, so it is suspending the resolution. That's what abeyance means.
If we pass the resolution earlier, we're going to suspend it and basically put that on hold until we get additional information.
So, and was the motion for that?
Yes, the, yes, the motion was to just hold, basically hold it until we get more information. There is a concurrent, concurrence of conflicting information coming from the state, the federal government. Now, the federal government is stuck in the fifth district. And so we want to make sure that we have the correct information, that we have state law apply, federal law apply. We're bumping up against a November 15th date that we were hoping to meet, but we don't feel with all the different conflicting information at this point, that it would be prudent to do that, given the different legal implications and the different levels of implications, and that the information is still coming in, and we need to make sure that we're meeting all applicable laws. And so we're not not implementing this, but we just need to make sure that it's suspended and on hold until we can get more information about the legalities of the different, the different levels that we are mandated for. So that is why we have this resolution or this action item on tonight. Any other comments before we vote? No? We will now vote to approve holding the mandate in staff vaccination and testing resolution in abeyance. Oh, I can't do, sorry. We have to go by roll call.
Allenberg?
Aye.
Fox?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Michelson?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Wallen Friedman?
Aye.
Okay, it is approved. The mandate is now in abeyance until further notice. Thank you. Do I have a motion to certify the election results?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any comment or question about this action item? No? We will now vote by roll call to certify the school board election results. Allenberg?
Aye.
Fox?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Michelson?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Wallen Friedman?
I can say that with the, there's no policies to be discussed now. We have had a little staffing change, and so we'll be back on track next month. And we are still on track to meet our policy review goals by the end of the school year.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the update. Superintendent Stanley, do you have any updates?
I sent a video out to the community earlier this month. November is the month of gratitude, and I have many things to be thankful for. I shared some of those things, and I just continued to encourage the community to find those things that we do have gratitude for, especially during this time of ongoing pandemic. We have many athletes who are doing incredible things. We have athletes who performed and outperformed in the cross-country meet, our girls soccer team. We just have so many things to be grateful for. We just honored several merit scholars, and so I just want to make certain that we are continuing to lift up those great things that are happening in our district and that we demonstrate our gratitude for that.
Well said. Thank you, Dr. Stanley. With that, actually before I adjourn the meeting, I want to remind everyone that our next meeting is a work session on, it's a, yeah, it is a work session, on eleven sixteen, and that we will be discussing COVID protocols, and then we will be voting on the updated masking update for athletics. That's all, we are adjourned. Thank you.